It's now 6 o'clock, April 16, 2019. It's time for our regular scheduled board meeting. Now I've asked Commissioner Fleming to open us with the implication in the pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we come tonight thanking you for your blessing. Thank you, God, for being God and God all by yourself. We thank you for light, strength, and we thank you for the angels that watched over and kept us and, Father, you've been good to us. Father, we pray that you bless our country, bless our leaders, those that is in charge. Give us strength. Look on us tonight as commissioners to do your will throughout the county. Bless us. And, Father, we know you're able to do all things as hell fair. Father, we ask these blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of April 2, 2019, minutes regular scheduled board meetings. Do I have any changes or corrections?
Move to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Number six for me. Six.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We have items two through seven. Any items wishing to be pulled? You said just six.
Number six, Mr. Chairman.
Attorney has item number six. Any others? Hear none. Have a motion to approve, two through five and seven?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. Fleming. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, item six, authorization to purchase van from the Florida Sheriff's Boys Ranch as a sole source in the amount of $9,000 budgeted item. Mr. Attorney?
Just a little technicality is all I want to deal with here. First, you have to declare the Boys Ranch as a sole source in the first part of the motion and then move to approve it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would request the consideration of the board in going ahead and adding the one additional agenda item because it is the same, it's a second van, same source, sole source. These are used vans that meet our budget limits.
The second vans and the price is $6,878.
Yes, sir. And 25 cents.
And 25 cents.
Both of them are being purchased from the Boys Ranch.
Can we do it in one motion?
Do the sole source and then put both of them in one motion is fine with me.
All right, do I have a motion to declare the Boys Ranch as a sole source for the purchase of two vans?
Motion.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, do I have motion to authorize the purchase of two vans, one in the amount of $9,000, the second in the amount of $6,878.25? Do I have a motion to approve it?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The next two items are time-specific. This is 6:05, so we'll go to number seven. Move on to the item eight. At 6:05 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution approving special permit request number SP 190301 by Michael Fuller, authorized agent of DDJ Development, to be granted a special permit under Section 147 Swan County Regulations for Excavation and Mining Operations on Properties on Ag 2.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Sure. I know our job is to make sure that this is acceptable for land use. This is...
Can you pull your mic, DM?
Sorry about that. I know that our job is to make sure that this work is something that's acceptable for land use regulations and stuff like that. But I know the city has a, and I'm sure she's going to stand up and say something about it, some questions about wells that I would just like for you to address when that time comes for the city. Just, I know DEP's got some regulations involved and there's a lot of other state agencies that have regulations involved to govern this. I just would, I would be curious, when we get to that point, how you're going to deal with it. I don't think it's going to change my opinion so much as to whether this is acceptable because it's gotten a recommendation, but, you know, I just want to know about those wells.
Would you like me to answer that question, sir?
Maybe we just, do you want to go ahead and deal with it now? Okay. Yeah, sure.
Most of those activities will occur in shallow areas. When Florida rock mined out there, they didn't really go very deep because they didn't have the technology back then to exceed a certain depth, in most cases 20 to 30 feet. So those activities that'll be conducted out there will be confined to the shallow areas at those locations across the property. The mines that, excuse me, the wells that were installed out there, I assume you're referring to the public supply wells for the city, they're installed at a very deep depth. I actually used to work for the Water Management District and I was involved with that project. Anticipate no interference at all with the surface activities involved in what we're proposing to do out there and the wells themselves. There should be no issues whatsoever.
Should be is not a guarantee, but if there is an issue, how do y'all handle it?
Any issue that could be tied back to the mining operation would be addressed at that time, but it's very unlikely that any issues would result based on what we intend to do out there at the locations and at the depths that we plan to do the recovery operations that would impact those wells. Off the top of my head, I can't remember the depth of those wells, but I believe they're somewhere between 140 and 200 feet below land surface.
Thank you. That's all. Chairman.
Any other questions for Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, this time we'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, they'd better wait at the podium.
Good evening, Board members and Mr. Administrator. My name is Gabrielle Redfern. My address is 101 White Avenue and I'm representing the City of Live Oak this evening. I first want to thank you for the opportunity, on behalf of the city, of our city manager, Ron Williams, of our mayor, Frank Davis, and our council president, Benny Thomas, for the opportunity to speak to you this evening regarding the special permit request for excavation and mining activities on property that's currently zone agricultural too. While the city is generally supportive of the objective of the application to assist in the reclamation of the property and make it more suitable for commercial and residential development, due to the proximity of our wellheads that was recently discussed, we respectfully seek a 30-day delay in the decision-making in this permit application to allow the city the opportunity to engage a third-party professional opinion as to what effects, if any, mining operations such as those described in the permit application may have upon our water supply. I have with me here tonight Andy Townsend, our Public Works Director, and we are here to answer any questions or concerns that you might have. Thank you for your consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak or add comment?
Well, we will. Okay. I can't see it.
I'd have to look back at the map.
North of I-10.
They're north of 10, but I'm not exactly sure.
No, the wells that he's speaking about, if you look at, how about this exhibit? Right, Mr. Fuller? If you look at where it has the middle property description, you know, of 11-02-South, 13, ends in .200, if you look right below that and there's a cleared area right there, it's kind of whitish as it attaches to the yellow, that's where the well site is located.
It's right in the middle of the mine.
Yeah, on one of the drawings, it had it squared out.
We've got a couple of squares there. We have a small rectangle there and we have a square that says...
The rectangle up to the right is a property that's owned by, used to be owned by the Nelson family. I'm not sure if it's owned by Mr. Nelson individually now or whether it's in a corporate name. And then the other square is the wellhead site.
With the three smaller circles around it or something.
Right.
On the west side of the property.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A moment of clarification?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. We have three wells on this site. I just wanted to clarify that for the board. It's not one, it's three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and figure one in the packet is the one that has the location, if you see the square, and then you see the three additional little squares?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question if Mr. Townsend knows the answer to it.
Okay.
Do you know how, do you know how deep the wells are out there?
Can?
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask you? Based on Mr. Townsend's knowledge, I didn't anticipate this and I could have put that information into this packet by pulling the well completion reports, but if the wells are 180 feet deep, I'm assuming, everyone's familiar with how the wells basically drilled here, there's unconsolidated material on top of rock, so you advance through the unconsolidated material, and then you isolate it with casing. When you reach the top of rock or what we call competent rock, which is a water bearing unit, you actually drill down into the rock and make a bore hole. So if they're 180 feet deep, you may have a bore hole probably, I'm guessing, 30 to 40 feet deep. So from, basically from 140 to 180, and I'm just assuming here, that's where your water production zone is. So from 140 to the top of land surface is basically unconsolidated material. I don't know what the geology is of that area, but there's a lot of silts, clays, and other material that act as an aquitard that would prevent downward movement. And then, remember, the proposed mining activities are all occurring in the first 30 feet or so, from zero to 30. So from 30 to 140, that area would be undisturbed, and then your water production area is going to be from 140 to 180. And again, I'm just assuming, but I can clarify that and pull those well completion reports.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One question. What kind of basically of easement would you be giving to these wells in your work?
Well, if you look at the map, again, figure one, for that stated earlier, we obviously would entertain and work with the city to come back with an appropriate easement to alleviate any fears they may have from interference with the proposed mining activities.
If I'm not mistaken, there's an easement of record already.
I would figure there probably would be.
And they won't be able to disturb that.
Right.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Fuller?
Yes, ma'am.
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Chairman and Board members, our concern is, as Mr. Fuller stated, that he's not familiar and there hasn't been recent geology or geotechnical investigations done on the site. Our concern would be that the mining activities would cause a collapse around the wells that would make the water unpotable. So that's why we're just asking for a 30-day delay so that we can engage in some geotechnical investigations adjacent to our well site to feel more confident in the substrata and the stability of the area around our site before mining activities take place adjacent to the wells. Thank you.
Is anyone else wishing to speak or make a public comment? This time we'll close public comment and open up board discussion.
If I might, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One of the things that hasn't been addressed here in the application or by staff up to this point is that consistency as we consider these mining operations. If you recall, we had recently, I'm going to call it ROX, W-R-O-X, you know, during calendar year 2018, down in the Branford area, they came in and had a permit request, you know, expanding their area down there. And as part of the requirements we had, there were a lot of complaints that dealt with rock and other materials going out onto the paved roads that surrounded the sites. So as a matter of consistency, I think we need to address the same type of potential issue, you know, here. It would be attached as, an attachment, one is the only one special condition. And if you recall, down there, basically, we said that you had to have, on all your haul road as it approaches the paved road, that you had to have 1.5 inches of asphalt minimum on there. Of course, if you're hauling rock, you'd be able to get your own compaction and what you need for the base right there. But it also would extend from the connection with the paved road back into the property for a depth of 250 feet. Of course, the applicant would still have to apply to get the appropriate driveway or right-of-way permit, and whatever work that you did do would be subject to, you know, the standard county review. So it's my recommendation that we be consistent and have the same condition applied to this mining permit as we have done in the ones in the past.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would concur with that, especially here because we have, I mean, it's a growing area and we're going to have a lot more people on that road. I'd like to see less rocks on that road than we had down on 49, which is an industrial area in the first place, so very rural. I'd also, I would also have no problem with adding a second condition. I think that there's enough question in my mind. I have no problem proving this for this type of work, but I think there's enough question here raised as far as the easement around the wells, as far as the potential problems. I think it's a reasonable request by the city. So I would, I would be willing to put a condition on there that they at least seek that information first. I don't know if you can do that or not. I don't know if we approve this request, they can start working tomorrow, type of thing, you know?
I don't think they can.
No, y'all've got other approvals you have to go through before they...
Approvers. I had a...
Number of other approvals.
The question is, is any of them involve the City of Live Oak?
They would involve the regulating agencies. MSHA would be involved and potentially DEP would have...
DEP.
...say in this because of the wells. I will say this, you know, I can't speak to the wells that are out there that city has, but, and I don't know if there's a plan, Mr. Fuller, is there a plan to blast out there?
Well, that was a question I had written down when y'all started talking about Branford on the blasting.
Sir, at this point in time, there's no plan to blast at that particular mine. We don't even know what we're going to encounter while we're out there. The majority of the recoverable material is going to be agricultural lime that they get out of those slurry ponds. We have a feeling that if there is competent rock encountered, it'll probably recover with the drag line. I'm not aware of any blasting requirements or blasting plan that's going to occur at that time, or at that mine at this time.
Well, I was going to say, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that we are blasting in the mine that we have in Branford.
We are.
And we're digging deeper than what they're talking about digging, and there are wells all around us. We haven't had any collapsing wells down there. The biggest complaint that we have is vibrations when we're blasting, walls vibrating, windows shaking. We refer those calls to Commissioner Stapleton because he's new.
Voice goes full.
Yeah. No, we really don't have substantive issues down there at all. We do have complaints from time to time about vibrations, and we used to have complaints of dust until we did the improvements with the driveways down there. So the driveway improvement is a good move, but I promise you, these residential wells in the area of Branford, not as deep as this one. They're very likely much shallower down there, and we're not having problems with intrusion or collapsing down there.
If I may comment, there was a statement made about other regulatory oversight here. There will be other agencies involved. This is not something that happens overnight. This is just the first step of a long process. We need to start at the county level. The City of Live Oak, we recognize your concerns. I'd be willing to work with you to help you understand more in-depth how your wells are constructed out there and the geology associated with them. I am a licensed water well contractor in the state of Florida also. We just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, full transparency. We're not trying to hide anything here. I think that if you take a 30,000-foot view of this project and look how Live Oak's growing, I've been here for 25 years, so I'm not a lifelong resident, but I've seen a lot of changes over the last 25 years. If that property is developed, it's in an area where most of growth is likely to occur, I think, over the next 25 to 50 years, and I think it will be a boon not only for Swanee County but for the City of Live Oak.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Chairman, if I might interrupt, please, first?
Well, we have left public comment.
Yes.
But I see hands going up and people lining up, so if the board doesn't have a problem with it, we'll reopen public comment, if that's not a problem, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah. Mr. Martin, if you're wishing to speak, I need you to swear in, sir.
And do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Fred Martin. I live at 422518151 Road, McCalvin, Florida. The question I have is, he says the wells there are 180 foot deep. Problem is, most shallow wells around that neighborhood are only 70 to 80 foot deep. My well at my house is only 78 foot deep worth of pipe. I just had it pulled. So his well at 180 foot, them wells out there are a heck of a lot deeper than everybody's wells that are around there, every ounce around there. Can't afford no 180-foot-deep well. That's all I got to say, but majority of the wells are 70 to 80 foot deep.
Fortunately, in this area...
And what is he going to do about the 70 that goes into them? Because that's shallow well compared to the city's wells, they're deep wells.
Fortunately, there aren't any wells...
There aren't any residential wells in this area, fortunately.
There's still what...
I understand, and it's...
But the water flows at a certain level.
Yes, sir.
When you pollute that water, everybody that has that well that deep in that area, even further down the road, it's going to be polluted water, if you understand what... I mean, it's going to flow somewhere, what I'm saying.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the, again, for the opportunity to speak. We appreciated Mr. Fuller's comments and would respectfully, again, ask for a 30-day delay to allow DDJ and Mr. Fuller to work with the city to allay our fears. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, Mr. Richardson and Mr. Fleming had a question. I'm sorry, Ms. Fleming, you go ahead.
My question was on the, if it were to come to doing some explosions out there, what is the, what is the range of the mileage of, you know, the distance that it would have effect because there are some hotels and some Walmart, all those places out there, big woods, there's a lot of people out, you know, places out there. What effect would it have?
Yes, sir. If blasting were to occur, that's a whole different process. You have to go through the state fire marshal's office.
Okay.
So you have to get a blasting permit, and the only people that can blast out there are licensed blasters, and there's a checklist probably about five or six pages long that blasters have to follow, and it takes into account all your concerns, what you just stated. And the way they blast today, the technology, it's very specialized, so they know what to put in, hold the blast, as opposed to the old blasting techniques and methods. Computerized technical programs are used, only give enough explosion to the point in a certain area that doesn't extend beyond that area. I'm not a blasting expert, but I have worked on permits that had blasting permits associated with them.
And I do know it's a process, and I know you just don't go out there and start blasting, and it was just a question I wanted to pose to you.
You're correct, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
I'd just say that having worked at one point in my life in the well drilling industry, I know that public water wells are a lot different than homeowners' wells, and if this company is liable for any damages based on their work out there and they're insured, fully insured for all those damages, I don't see, at this point, other than a well being affected, I don't see this point where we're really should be terribly concerned. But my concern, based on not knowing that information, is if they still have to go through permit after permit after permit with state agencies, and none of them deal with the City of Live Oak and their wells, I think the City of Live Oak has an interest in this whole entire thing, and they have the right to have their fears lead.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. I have a question for Mr. Fuller.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any problem with the 30-day request? Is that going to hinder you in any way? I understand everybody's in a hurry, but I'm just...
Well, you know, time's money in this business, and of course, I know my client would be concerned about it, but I can't really speak for them as far as you're asking me directly. I don't have a problem working with the city. If you were to approve this tonight, I mean, the simple fact of the matter is, before they could even start mining, after you're probably looking at six to nine months. So based on what needs to occur in moving equipment on-site, the process by which we have to obtain the other permits necessary to start mining operations, I think, so it's my understanding, this is the first time, and before the commission, but if you approve this request, I think the City of Live Oak still has recourse, correct me if I'm wrong, during the other permitting processes to express objections to what is happening out there. I may be wrong, but I did permitting for almost 19 years with Water Management District, and I, last two years I've been working as a consultant since I left Water Management. Anytime an environmental resource permit is filed with the state of Florida, there is an open comment period, and I'd be glad to hear that process with you, ma'am, and the city. So I don't know if this is the place and time to address those concerns by the City of Live Oak, but by you moving forward and approving this tonight, I don't think it shuts out the City of Live Oak from the process going forward to express their concerns about what's going to be done at the property in relation to their wells.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city appreciates what Mr. Fuller said, and we also appreciate what Commissioner Richardson brought up as far as remedies, but those remedies would be litigious and after the fact, and would put an undue burden on the city at that time. So all we're really asking for is to allow us to do a little due diligence and work with this applicant on the effects that it has on us. And we understand the implication of time and money and projects, but we believe that a 30-day delay would help us avoid future conflicts as they get their other permitting. We certainly don't want to chase them around the state as they go before agency and agencies for their permits, if it's something that we can solve together as partners in this project in the next 30 days. days, that would be our goal and hope, is to try to simplify the relationship and just sort it out together in the next 30 days. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
License to Fuller to come back one more time.
Yes, sir.
My question to you, it seems as if the city is concerned about the 30 days. They're saying that the 30 days, they're not willing to abide by those 30 days, which ultimately is up to this board to decide whether we will do it tonight. I don't know what's the push or the rush on the city's side, but, you know, I do have some concerns, you know, if I don't want... And I hope the board don't mash your decision, the company that you're working for, their decision on... They know how they... Their time, they know what time they have. Like I said earlier, I know it's a process, and you've got to go through all these different channels. You've got to go through geology tests, as you said. They've got to do all the things, all the timeframe, and I don't want to hinder anything that you guys are trying to do. But at the same time, I would love for it to be careful planning in doing so, what you're trying to get accomplished.
Yeah, I understand that, and I appreciate your position, sir. I have a question for the city of Live Oak.
Excuse me, Mr. Fuller. If it's just general information.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know how the process works, but I was going to... My only question would be, by what process would they use the 30 days to vet that?
Well, that was...
That was my question, too. I want to know that.
That would be a question to direct to Ms. Gabrielle.
Yeah, that was what we were looking at on what the city plans to do over the next 30 days.
Yeah, I understand collaborating, but I'd like a little more detailed explanation when you say collaborate.
You're saying 30 days.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, through the chair. Appreciate the opportunity to talk. To be totally honest, you know, we didn't see this item until late this afternoon, and we talked about it internally. We just want to be able to hear from the applicant and work with them in a collaborative effort on what kind of guarantees that they're going to put in to safeguard our wells. We'd like to know more about the possible mining operations. We might want to engage or have someone engaged in some geotechnical reports around our wells to talk about the stability of that soil and how mining activities adjacent to our soil would impact our soil and our wells. You know, this just came up in our realm just today, and so that's why we're asking for this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I have a question, too. Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I just... I appreciate the concerns that the city has, but this board is not the permitting agency for the mining operation. All of the geological, hydrological issues are going to be addressed by the permitting agencies. They're actually the regulatory agencies for those operations. This board is being asked to make a land use decision. Is this a compatible use for this property, continuing to do what has been done historically on the property? That's really what you're being asked tonight. These are all legitimate questions that they have, but the regulatory agencies that deal in those matters are the ones that should be trying to respond to those questions.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Hill?
I guess I was just wondering, could a study like what the city's wanting to have done be accomplished in 30 days? I know how some of these things go, and having a study like that done, I'm just not sure that can be accomplished in 30 days.
Well, who's going to pay for the study? Who's going to do the study? I guess is another question.
Yeah.
I have no idea. All right. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? We're going to close it again.
I have to say what's on the heart.
I'll say it, Ms. Fleming. But I mean, we're going to have board discussion, but if...
I don't want to get drawn in between the city, DDJ, what they're trying to get accomplished. As Mr. Harris stated, we are here not as permitting. We're not here to decide what they're doing and the water and the city's situation. Our position is, are to do what they're asking us to do. That's all I'm saying.
Understood. All right. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Just come on up.
Excuse me, you haven't been sworn yet? Okay, all righty. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
As you speak, name and address first, please.
Yes, Andy Townsend, City of Live Oak Public Works Director, 101 Southeast White Avenue. I just want to reemphasize what Gabrielle has stated. The 30-day extension is not, you know, out of the realm. If we had been approached about this project 30 days ago, we wouldn't be here today. We just found out about this project. We don't know what effects it'll have or not have. Now, Mr. Harris stated that it's not a permit or anything like that, but when I'm reading the application, this is a permit that he's applying for. So it does affect us. You are approving a permit at this time. Again, I do not think 30 days is asking too much for us to investigate a little more into this and to see what outcome can be done with this to where it does not affect our wells. As far as geotech testing, who's going to pay for this? These are things we can work out in the next 30 days. Hopefully, in the next 30 days, we will have everything taken care of. But had we been approached sooner to this, again, we wouldn't be here where we are now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could please just clarify something. Our LDRs, the permit that we call a special permit, has nothing to do with, at all, a mining permit. We call it a special permit because it's a process that we use to establish a use on a piece of property. And we use that same terminology in any number of other applications that have nothing to do with mining as well. So my point was very simple. We are not a regulating agency that regulates mining activities. Those do require permit, and there are agencies that handle that.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Koch, 1805289th Road. Commissioners, your job is to deal with land use issues and allowing different uses of lands to be compatible with other compatible uses of land surrounding it. Two, that's been an eyesore out there for over 50, almost 60 years, and a company has been willing to use their profit, their time, their money to do something with it, and has turned a certain percentage of this land into useful semi-environmental okay stuff, tax revenue for us all. And the third thing is, is that the city of Live Oak has had 60 days in order to see this project and have never done their due diligence in a consistent manner for nearly 50 years, and it's the problem of the city of waiting to the last minute to say, "Oh, my gosh! It just happened to us!" When they had 60 days to become aware of this project and have their concerns, and if nothing more, go before the zoning and review board to bring these concerns. Gentlemen, please do your jobs and vote on this issue in a positive manner.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Going once, going twice.
I've got one question for you again, Mr. Fuller, and this will be my last one for You said that y'all didn't plan on doing any blasting and that y'all were only mining up to a certain depth. What, you say max 35, maybe 40 feet?
Yes, sir. We plan to chase what Florida rock did out there. We don't have any major plans to go much further past what Florida rock did when they originally mined the property. Majority of, I'd say 80% of the activities that will be performed and conducted out there as far as mining's concerned, it's just going to be flurry pond recovery of those ag materials, i.e. limestone, containing, that can be washed and processed and resold again for agricultural use.
Would the people you represent, do you feel that they would have a problem if we set a max depth on what they could mine?
I think that... I really can't answer that question. I think that's a, in my opinion, based on what I know, I think that would be a question best left to the regulatory agencies that have the subject matter expertise, make those decisions based on science and technology.
What about a ban on blasting?
Again, I can't talk on behalf of my client to abandon blasting. All I can tell you is that if a blasting permit is applied for through the state fire marshal's office, there's a process by which that permit can be challenged.
That's really my only concern, is blasting within too close of proximity to the mine or...
You can ask him.
Mining close to it at an extreme depth. But any other questions from the board for Mr. Fuller?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fuller, inside of what's going on here, would you be willing to take the one parcel of property where the wells are off of tonight's request and let us possibly move forward the other two parcels?
When you say take it off, you mean if...
Basically, you'd be removing it from the request tonight, the one parcel where the wells are.
For a matter of debate or for the foreseeable future?
Well, it would be to...
Procedurally, what would happen is that you'd drop, because the request includes three separate parcels, you could technically drop one of the parcels, the one to the west, off of the request, you know, for this evening, and it would proceed forward. If you remove it, then if you further on down the road, you get other matters straightened out, or however you want to call it, you can always reapply for that particular area.
Again, you know, you're talking about a cost associated with that that my client would have to bear, and I don't know if I can make that decision for them tonight. Because if I understand you correctly, I would have to go through the process again that we're going through tonight, so I would have to prepare another application package for that one parcel, just as I did for the three.
That would be correct.
Yes. I can't make that commitment tonight to take that parcel off.
Yes, sir. I'm just trying to come up with some ideas here.
I appreciate your...
I would feel more comfortable with that moving forward tonight.
I'm 110% in favor of reclaiming that property.
Oh, yeah.
And they've got a plan to do it. And I understand what the city's concerns, too, and I, you know, I...
I guess it doesn't, you know, and again, I'm talking from my perspective as a subject matter expert in matters of geology. Prior to coming to work for the Water Management District, I worked in the consulting field for 11 years. Also, as an Army reservist retired as lieutenant colonel, I was an environmental science and engineering officer. I've installed wells in Afghanistan, South America, Central America, Africa. If I felt this was a bad project, I never would have signed on to it. Can I state with 100-degree certainty that what we're doing out there cannot, or might not, or would never impact the city wells? I can't say that, because anything's possible. You could drill a well here and see a lithologic profile completely different than if you drilled a well against that wall back there. So once you go into the subsurface environment, one thing is certain is uncertainty. But based on the geologic pattern and profile and the separation between where the surface mining will stop and the wells start, I can almost guarantee there will be no interference. Again, I can't state that there won't be any interference, but based on my professional judgment, I would almost state with certainty that there would not be a conflict. And then I can also state that I can make, that we would respect any easements from those wells, and that initially, I believe all mining activities will occur on the other end of the property, on the north end, and work south. So again, I'd be willing to help the city of Live Oak. I know environmental investigations are expensive and time's not cheap when you engage individuals like that. I don't have the equipment to do a geotechnical investigation, but I have the subject matter expertise to help them take a look at what they might be dealing with. I don't know what reasonable assurance that we can provide, other than looking at the lithologic profiles of the materials that were covered when those wells were first drilled. I believe there was test wells drilled out there prior to the installation of the city wells. There's a wealth of geologic information and your records already that you can pull and look at if you were to pay for another geotechnical investigation. You'd pretty much just be spending money that you don't need to spend. The only thing you could do would be to hire someone different, independent third party, to give you an opinion on what might happen. But they're not going to be able to say with any certainty what might happen out there. They would give you the same opinion that I would give you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, but I have a question for Mr. Meeks, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Meeks, was there any consideration in this process, going through this permitting process, of the city's wells were enough to reach out and contract, contact anyone from the city about that?
No.
I mean, even notification that this is a decision that's being made, so that someone could come out and...
We didn't spell the city of Live Oak specifically, and even well...
Is there any reasonable... Is there any reason why we would have reasonable grounds to believe that they would already know about this? They could have known that this was going on with the county?
We advertised for it.
Is there an advertisement? That's what I was asking for.
The PNC.
And the planning and zoning board meeting was held in City Hall.
That says a lot.
Excuse me, Mr. Meeks?
The parcel that's north of I-10 already has a mining approval, already has and has had since 2001, and has a mine permit.
That's where they're hauling the rock from now to the public site.
That's adjacent to where the actual water tower is. Distance-wise, I'm not sure.
It's a different ownership as well.
But it's a mine.
It's a mine.
I'm speaking the land use pattern.
That mine is referred to right now as Cedar Pine Mine Number One. It's owned by Tony Slaman. Used to be owned by Mr. Wainwright. It is 47 acres in size. The permit is in force. It's being mined by a gentleman from Panama City, Florida. And that gentleman would be the same gentleman, once he completes mining operations there, would be moving to the DDJ property and doing that recovery operation. It's going to be more of a recovery operation on the DDJ property than at the Cedar Pine Mine.
What was mentioned earlier about withdrawing that parcel of land where the well was at, I don't know if even this would be consideration. If spoke to the 30-day issue, and I asked, rather than having to reapply for that, would the board consider that portion in 30 days and approve this?
You can't break that part up.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, you can withdraw that parcel and consider the other part. You can't approve part of it.
But it would have to be re-advertised again.
You can't, I mean, as part of the process tonight, you can say, "All right, we approve parcel one and parcel two, but we don't approve parcel three." Now, you can do that, because the parcels are specifically, you know, identified, you know, in there. But to follow that logic, you can't quite do that. You have to, it would be withdrawn and then a new application submitted.
Can we place a setback around the wells?
There is a requirement already for the mining, and it appears, and I didn't bring it with me tonight, but there are setback requirements already out there in our LDRs that, Ronald, it seemed to me that when it's 300-feet setback from any residential development, you know, in there, then the exterior part around the property was substantially reduced to about 60 feet between 60 and 100. Do you have that with you, Ms. Gabrielle?
I think that I do have your LDRs with me.
Okay, I only brought, I only brought one part tonight.
May I approach?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Double check.
This is not the specific one I was talking about. It's in the beginning part, but there's potable well field protection, and it has a 300-foot zone that goes around it. So, when you have the development order, whatever activity they would be doing would have to be protected up to 300 feet anyway. Otherwise, they'd be violating, you know, the LDRs, you know, in that fashion. That appears as section 6.2 in the LDR. There's also a fuller, further, you know, development, when you have a development order and for special permit, like I said, I think it is 300 feet, you know, for that. So, irrespective, it wouldn't have, they wouldn't have activity within 300 feet of that anyway.
Well, that 300 feet was a setback I was going to recommend. If it's already there, then that's great. Any further questions for anybody? I'm going to close public comment if not. All right, this time we'll close public comment if no one else wishes to speak. Hear none, we close public comment, enter into board discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I never realized, for some reason, it just never clicked, that planning and zoning happens in the city of Live Oak, City Hall. There is a timeframe for which all these permanent, this permitting, the further permitting that the state has take place. If the city has an issue, they should be able to use that time to be able to discuss this matter and find out whether or not there's going to be an issue, and then go to those particular boards to deal with those issues, since those are the ones that have to deal with those specific issues anyway, and we don't. I do agree that this property fits, the work that you all want to do on this property fits with the area. I do have a concern about blasting, a strong concern about blasting, because it's so close to retail and a lot of business growth out there right now. But I, I think it's a great idea to get this property reclaimed, get it back on the market, and something that's usable, that can, that can really expand opportunities for businesses and residents out in that area. So, it's kind of one of those things where, you know, I feel for you guys, I understand it, but how long have you had to deal with this issue? You really have had a long period of time to deal with it, and Mr. Koch makes a very good point. So, I appreciate you bringing that out, John. And if you can do this study during this process, this permitting process, I don't see any need to delay it anymore.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I think I've said enough, but I concur with Commissioner Richardson. I voiced my opinion and say the same thing. I don't want to get in the middle of what DDJ is trying to do, to make that profit, that property profitable. It's been a long time. I'm 61 years old, and I've been around this county all for quite a while, and it is an ugly mess out there. Why we have the opportunity to get this mess cleaned up, I think we should take advantage of that.
All right. Anyone else have any questions or comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just remind you, since it's been a little while since we did that, about the potential, you know, one, number one condition to be consistent.
I've got it written down on the hall road.
Right, thank you. If you, if you so desire to do that, I'll read what I recommend into the record then. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, to be labeled as special permitting for mining activities, approved with the following conditions. One, the applicant must improve the two proposed haul roads leading to the two designated entrance/exit routes, 72nd Trace Northwest and 68th Terrace period. The applicant shall pave the proposed haul roads with asphalt containing a minimum of 1.5 inch thickness with a width for vehicular truck passage for a distance of 250 feet, beginning at the haul road's physical connection with either 72nd Trace Northwest or 68th Terrace, and extending back into the area of the proposed mining site. Applicants shall still make appropriate application for driveway/right-of-way permit for review and approval by county staff. Any future entrance/exit routes and haul roads shall be subject to the same conditions.
Any questions from any of the board members?
Mr. Chairman, one question that I have about the condition would be, would this condition be met with any type of blacktop, any type of millings, or any type of chip seal, or would it only be met by paving?
It says asphalt containing a minimum of 1.5 inch thickness. If you recall at the last hearing that we had, the particular entity, you know, they were doing, pulling lime out of there, lime rock out of there, and they had their own equipment so that they could do their own, you know, packing, you know, for whatever appropriate thickness they desire on their property. The idea for all of this was, was to give a lead-in into, onto the public right-of-way, and a paved roads especially, to keep any other lime or other debris, you know, off of the road. It was down in your, down in your district, down there, you recall that? So, and we're requiring asphalt to be consistent.
Okay. It seems like that they put millings down, that's why I was asking that question, down in the south end, and I wasn't sure if they had finished what they were doing.
All right. If the board so chooses to approve, I'm all in favor of cleaning it up, getting it done, doing what they have to do. I'm not crazy about the idea of giving permission to blast, just in where it's at, and just, that's one thing I kind of have a problem with. I don't know if y'all will, and I have another condition that bans the blasting. Any feedback on that, or?
I have to agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I don't like that, like I said, I don't like the idea of blasting out there in the area either, even though, I mean, we, and I'll just tell you this, I live in O'Brien, and I live about 10 miles away from, from the mines down in the south end, and we can hear those blasts, and we can feel those shake, that shaking of the ground, and, you know, our places, residents shake when they blast. It's not something that is terribly annoying, but it is something that I would be concerned about if I were a business on the border with this property, or very close to the border of this property. That's my biggest issue with it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd just say I agree. I mean, we have a nursing home, a Dallas's facility out there. There's a lot of things adjacent to that that could pose a problem.
There's homes there now.
Yeah.
Yep.
You got a particular way you want to word that, Mr. Attorney?
Applicants shall not use a blasting technique, and/or blasting would be prohibited upon mined areas.
All right, any further discussion amongst the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the motion to approve with the conditions of the paving, as counsel has stated, as well as the blasting.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
With the two amendments. I got a second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we'll close public hearing. Thank y'all. All right. At this time, we'll move on to our next public hearing at 6:05 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard. Hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution approving special permit for temporary use request, SPTU 19301, by American Promotional Events, DBA TNT fireworks. To be granted a special permit for temporary use under section 1410, Swan County Land Development Regulations for a firework tent sale, starting June 20th through July 5th, on properties on commercial intentions of them. Anyone wishing to speak at this one, if you weren't already sworn in, would you please stand to be sworn in again? Seeing none, at this time, we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this, I believe, is about the fifth time we've had this request come before the board. They come usually every January, every July. It is a temporary use permit that would be issued by the Board of County Commissioners to allow the fireworks tent sale from the dates that are specified on the application from June the 20th through July the 5th. You have in your packet an approval for resolution for approval, if you so choose to approve it. And at this time, I have nothing else to add to the request, and I would enter the file into the record.
Thanks, sir.
At this time, I'll take the file, and it is composite exhibit one.
All right. Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Meeks? Hear none, at this time, we'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to make comment or speak on the matter, if they'd make their way to the podium? Seeing none, at this time, we'll close public comment. Any discussion by the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, number eight, we prohibited blasting, number nine, we're fixing to approve it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
That's an off-site blast.
That's off-site blasting.
Yeah.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that? Got a second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we'll close public hearing. All right. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. This time, we'll move on to staff reports. Greg Scott, park director and airport manager.
Good evening, always a good time to be here tonight. Just want to bring you up to date on a few things we've got going. You've got T-ball, baseball, and softball underway. We've got 360 children participating in those programs on the Douglas Center project. We've installed the new playground, working on the ball fields now, did quite a bit of fencing around the perimeter, do more as we go forward. The unique abilities grant for the city have been working on. We should be, wrap that up by the, by early June. The expansion of the ball, I mean, the expansion of the playground and the ball field is getting a lot of positive comments, a lot of use, and we're excited about that. The trail project is on schedule. Paving should start at the end of next week, and should be all completed by the 1st of June also. The, we had an environmental study done, something we have to do every year, every five years or so at the airport, where they look at all the properties that the airport owns, including public works and fire rescue, and all those properties look much better than they were in the past, and so we haven't got that final report yet, but it looks very favorable. Just wanted to mention one other thing. Any questions that you have with me before I move forward? Just want to let you know that for the public, the chairman had to go out of town to cover a special event, work on Hookin' on Heroes, and he called in reinforcements for another local activity, which was the lawnmower race. Had two commissioners step up and volunteered to do that. They called in recruits. It was kind of the bottom of the totem pole, Jimmy Norris and I, but Mr. Hale and Mr. Stapleton rose to the challenge and just...
Rose to the challenge? I heard it was you and Mr. Norris that had to pull them across the finish line.
Yep. Just so you know, we didn't just win, we lapped the field, and like I told on the radio, when we got interviewed after the race, I was quite surprised at the lack of competition we had. But it's a great time, great cause, really appreciate the opportunity to stand in on y'all's behalf, but these guys are competitive, and Jimmy and I knew that we better pull our end of the log, or we'd be doing something different.
Now, they had, they had a video on Facebook, and I seen good sportsmanship out of the board, but I won't mention the sheriff. Got a little red-faced out there.
He ain't red. I was just saying that, you know, we was, they were at the face line, and, you know, I got very interrupted. Actually, I protested, but I... The sheriff said, "You talking about racing again without a driver?"
Oh, goodness.
We found out his name when he tried.
Well, I serve as the president of the Ark in North Florida, and we appreciate y'all stepping up, the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, everyone else, that it's a good fundraiser for their mission, and it's greatly appreciated.
I might add that there's other county offices also that attempted to be successful, but Chad, weren't you there? I think, but Sheriff, I'm sorry, but I'm driving the county trucks, does that count for anything? Anyway, thank y'all.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to general business item 11, discuss the board action, construction, engineering inspections for county projects. Randy Harris, county administrator.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'm going to make a request that we be allowed to hire our own inspector for these construction projects. We circulated a list, and we've had discussions for a long time with DOT on this issue. We want ultimately to be able to use funding from DOT, because DOT currently funds the cost of CEI or inspections on our construction projects, road construction projects. But what I circulated was a list that totals $825,000 we've paid in the last year or so. That doesn't include 122nd and 136A that'll be coming up soon. This is an enormous expense that we're paying. I've spoken to a gentleman that is an inspector, completely certified to handle this, and I was trying to obtain some type of range that we might have to pay if we hired someone, and I'm here to tell you that the number that he shared with me was about $84,000 plus benefits, like we would pay all of our employees if we hired our own inspector. Well, what that means is, and in a conversation that Mrs. Vickers and I had recently with DOT, they're leaning toward going ahead and allow us to use that as a reimbursable expense from DOT. So, if we're only using $85,000 plus benefits, they are for our inspections, and we're able then to turn that difference into additional asphalt on all the roads in the county, except Commissioner Stapleton's, of course, because he's the new guy. But in any event, we just think it would be money better spent putting more asphalt down throughout the county, and this would be a significant benefit to the people in the county. So, that's our request. We would have to put him in a county vehicle and pay his benefits and everything else that we do other employees, but long-term, I think it's a win for us. Now, I will say that there will be occasions, potentially, where we've got so many projects going at one time, that we may still have to subcontract or contract some CEI on a project or two from time to time. But the anticipation is that we would be able to handle most of these with an employee, instead of continuing to contract all of this out the way we do today.
122nd, that's a...
Padlock Road.
Padlock Road, and we don't have any DOT funding for that one currently, do we?
That's correct.
So, we're going to pay that one out of pocket regardless.
That's correct.
Sometimes we fall in a situation where we're paying it anyway, then it's not reimbursable because the grant didn't allow enough money for the project. because the grant didn't allow enough money for the project to start with. So I, I'm in favor of it. It's something we probably should have done several years ago. But any feedback from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had a discussion, Mr. Harris, a while back about this same thing, and we're wasting money. And another thing that's concerning to me is, you can hire some of the best companies in the world, and that still don't mean they're looking after you like some of your own people will. And I'm not saying that in a negative light about any company in particular, but I just feel like if we have somebody in-house that are looking out for Swanee County and mainly District Four's best interests.
Hmm. It'll be easy in your district with less asphalt, but...
That was me last year.
I'll tell you what.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Question, a few questions, actually. Are they willing to reimburse us the entire eighty-four thousand plus, plus benefits for the work of, that he does?
I cannot answer that question right now. We had a general conversation about this as recently as last week. Again, they said it's gonna be a reimbursable expense, so we haven't gotten into details of that yet. They may have, they may establish an hourly rate that they will establish across the board with all counties. There's really...
I know there's, there's been that talk at the state level, but look at it, I mean, the way I look at it, Mr. Richardson, he's got a total here of over eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars when you figure in the other two roads. It's worth ten percent of that, us paying it out of pocket, just to have almost a million dollars more asphalt on dirt.
I, I agree. What I don't want to be done is stuck with the, with the cost of having another, for lack of a better way of saying it, a, a salary that's on par with a director's salary. So I just feel like that's, it's a lot, just someone to do engineering, even though we'd save a ton of money, and I agree that there's obviously a lot of savings on it. I just don't want to be stuck with it later on down the road when D O C, D O T decides, well, you don't use, you don't use him for basically what we need him for, so, you know, we're not gonna give you any money for it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Richardson, I'd just like to say, if it's cost us eight hundred thousand dollars, and we're only gonna be spending eighty-four thousand, I feel like that's enough of savings to justify having that person. And second, I would like to say, is as much as we're all up here screaming for roads to be paved and working hard for it every day to make it happen, that man will never be without something to do, trust me.
And I agree with you on that, but the eight, the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars mostly comes out of grant money, so...
It does, it does, but it's still, when you can widen a road the first time, instead of having to go back and widen it down the road because you've got extra money in the budget, it makes a difference. I understand where you're coming from, but with this, especially with one hundred and twenty-second coming up, we may pay thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars for the C E I on that road, and we're gonna pay for it. That's not, that road there is not reimbursable for whatever reason. So, I mean, we're fixing to be out of pocket that regardless, if we wanna pave that road. It is in District Four, so, I mean, you've heard what Mr. Harris said, we don't have to.
They both are.
Any possibility that we can roll his, this inspector into a position that could be utilized more than just inspecting roads, doing C E I work?
Well, there are so many things that we can't even do that other counties can do because we don't have the staff to do it. I'd love to have someone inspecting bridges. D O T handles that and sends us a report, but there are many things that we could do to assist in that as well, that we don't, like other counties do, just because we don't have the staff to do it. So this, this man won't be lacking something to do on a regular basis. I think every, everyone in this room today that works for the county is multitasking every day. I mean, everyone has ten to fifteen to twenty responsibilities because we spread it across the board. So this, this gentleman's gonna be loaded up with responsibilities on a daily basis, without a doubt.
And I know that we can keep him busy with chip seal roads because they certainly need to be looked at from an engineering perspective, especially if we're putting asphalt on top of dirt and sending water out the side of the roads.
But I, I see this as a, starting out as an inspector's position that can expand over time, especially, you're gonna have years where we got a lot of roads and he's gonna be tied up, and then you're gonna have years where we may only get one road, two roads. So I don't have any doubt that we're gonna find plenty for him to do. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Gotcha.
I'd just like to say, I, I mean, I respect Commissioner Richardson's comments, and I, I think I feel where he's coming from with this, and it's about hiring extra people, and we all hear that from our constituents about adding people. But sometimes it's just, it's something that needs to happen, and this is one of those times, I feel, that it's justified, and it will save the county money, and if we, and it will give us a better product.
Well, most time when you're adding people, you're adding costs, but this is one situation where you're reducing costs. And, and in all reality, you've got, you're not adding somebody, they're already on the payroll, just to the tune of eight hundred thousand dollars.
And we're growing, and as we grow, these positions will come, become available, as long, and these M S B U projects, they may take off. I mean, there's just, I see a large range here this person could be utilized.
And I agree that, that an engineering of any, if any position was warranted, a road engineer's position is warranted in our county, especially as we start building more roads ourselves, we go back to that business again, you know, all that can help, not to mention just the sheer fact that he can do the C E Is for us. And I, again, this is not an issue with not seeing the need, it's an issue with being, being concerned about an additional employee, additional salary, and, and, you know, just, it's just more money spent, that's all, and I wanna make sure that we're gonna get our best, get the most out of them, especially when it's a director-level pay. And I know these engineers don't make, you know, they make a lot of money, that's what they're engineers for.
This isn't an engineer.
He's not an engineer, he's just an inspector.
No. This is an inspector. He's, he's looking at the engineering, and he's inspecting the engineering associated with the project. I guess I should have put a question on the agenda. I have an opportunity to save you about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, y'all win. That might have been a better way to approach it, because in reality...
Came out of our budget, yeah.
We are going to pay, we're going to pay this money. There have been changes over the years on this C E I issue, and D O T recognized that some of them were not really good decisions. They made a really bad policy change on this C E I issue a few years ago, and it increased the expense dramatically. And I think everyone across the board involved in this arena recognizes that, but having said that, we've been working really hard, and even with the association of counties and the small county coalition, trying to get this changed, and it's changing for the better. So now that they're saying they're seriously considering reimbursing this expense, which I think they're going to do with this new budget year, and they just told us that in the last week, we have an opportunity to go ahead and save this money, and we need to. And we all recognize, you know, it's been pretty clear with everyone that we're not putting enough asphalt down, and we're coming up short on funding, so here's an opportunity to change that.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, when we run short on, on funds to complete a road because we're paying for an inspector, then the run, the funds to complete it wind up coming out of our budget. So it's, it's gonna help us all the way around. It frees up a lot of money, yes. Like you mentioned earlier, it is grants, but we're still tasked with the job of being responsible for the grant dollars as well. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Stapleton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Everybody good, or anybody need a break?
Need a break.
Gonna take a break? All right, go ahead. Take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Business, under general business, item number twelve, discuss with possible board action, personnel policy. County Administrator Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this, we call this a policy, but it really has not been a policy necessarily. As you know, each year, toward the end of our budget workshops, the board makes a decision on what we can afford to offer the employees in any additional pay. Well, historically, that has been applied to employees that have been with the county for at least one year, and I'm confident that each of you have heard concerns expressed from employees who have maybe been with the county for eleven months when that occurs, and then they have to wait another year. So in some cases, they're waiting nearly two years before they have that annual increase applied. So one proposal here is to change that to six months or some other number of months or some other, other approach to try to affect those employees, so they're not waiting nearly two years for that increase that all of the other employees are realizing after the budget is adopted. That's the first issue.
All right. Was, any discussion, any feelings on that from board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I spoke with Mr. Harris earlier about this, and I think the problem, it's not addressing the problem, and I think we have a way of addressing the problem. The problem is, is that when an employee gets the, if employees hired short of, of a year by the time the fiscal year begins, that they don't get a raise, and if it's a six-month, if it's a six-month probationary period or period in which they, they've gotta wait for this, these raises, if they get hired in, let's say, just short of that six month, by the time they get to the new fiscal year, they have to wait then eighteen months for the, for the raise to, to get there, which is still the same problem. Twenty-four months, eighteen months is, I think we're splitting hairs here, but we can fix this issue by giving the administrator, when he budgets in the year, the enough money to be able to give the raises, whatever that anniversary date is or that date is, that amount of time that they are here during the year, to give the raises then. So they're not waiting another year for their, for any, any of these raises to come in. And I assume that this includes not only merit raises, but includes the cost of living raises at the end of the year that we give, is what you just mentioned, right?
Well, the only raises that we're applying are the ones that the board approves during the budget cycle. It's the annual, whatever it happens to be.
I, I just, I believe that we would be best to just change the policy. I think that it's gonna, it's not gonna add that much into our budget, simply because there's still gonna be a number of, of employees that don't make it through the, through that period of time anyway, and when they're rehired, and when somebody's, or somebody who's, who, who leaves, that we end up replacing with a new person who's hired at a much lower rate of pay. I believe it's just gonna wash itself out for the most part in the budget year. So I think we should just simply give them the tools to be able to give the raises during the year.
Are you talking about going back to their anniversary dates and giving the raises on anniversary dates?
It, it wouldn't matter if it's a, if we, if, if we leave this at twelve months or at six months, that's, that's up to us, but whatever it is, that we, they don't have to wait to a whole new fiscal year to be able to get any raises that they may deserve or that they, you know, that, that we may have issued. In other words, okay, so let's, let me just put it out in terms that hopefully everybody understands. So let's say we give fifty, is it fifty cents an hour?
Yep.
Plus a percentage?
One percent.
One percent? So we've approved that fifty cents an hour, so-and-so gets, gets hired in on October the, the fifth. Fiscal year starts on October the first. He doesn't get a raise until the next year. He's waiting twelve months for basically that raise. All right. So instead of that, and on, six months from October the fifth, he's eligible now, he or she's eligible for that, that two percent, or that, sorry, that fifty cents plus one percent, and we can go ahead and give it in there, and it's worked into the budget.
It would affect the employees if, if we did that, it would only affect the employees that were hired in the preceding six months prior to that new fiscal year kicking in. The balance sum would continue to get their raise on October one like they have been. Because that idea of tracking every anniversary date for every employee...
No, we did that with the longevity raises, but the, the one percent is still a longevity raise.
Right.
So if you hire somebody straight off the street at one month, and they come in, they're getting a longevity raise at the beginning of the year, I would, I mean, they at least need to be off probation.
And I think we talked about that being six months for most employees.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where the six months came in, and I'm fine with six months. It may create a little bit of a problem, but I don't, I mean, wait in eighteen months is better than waiting twenty-four months.
Yeah.
And if they got, if they, nevermind, I ain't gonna say that.
It's just eighteen months? If, if you had to wait eighteen months for a, for a raise, how long would you stay?
I've waited a lot longer than eighteen months for one, I can promise you.
I'm sure.
I waited eight years for one.
What's a raise?
Don't get me started.
And I know it's different here. I mean, we actually do ours with, with my company by hours worked and prorated. That's also how we figure vacation time and things of that nature, but it, it's a mess, and I'm gonna be honest with you. It's hard to track.
It's, it's hard to track, and, and I can, I, I'm fine with moving it to the six months, just picking that number, that's our probation number, and if they're not off probation, by the time the raises come due, they, they wait another twelve months.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just simply say, I oppose this. I don't oppose the fact that we move it at six months in any way, shape, or form, but I do oppose the fact that this is not fixing the issue, and I believe that needs to be addressed, and as long as we're not willing to do that, then I can't, I can't support any motion based upon this request.
Okay.
I mean, if six months is our probation period, I mean, I've never given anyone a raise until they've got off of probation. I mean, it just makes sense to me if, if that's what our probation period is.
And again, I agree with that. I agree with that.
Right.
Six months should match our probation period, that, that should match it, but we need to address the issue of people not having to wait so long for a raise, just because private employers, they give a raise after their probationary period, if they give a raise, they offer it after probationary period. I think we should do the same, we not, shouldn't have to wait till the next fiscal year.
Any motions? I have a motion that accepts staff recommendation.
I make a motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Passes four one. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Next issue, as sort of stated with this agenda item, was the, probably your first look at what we call a staff position level, which is actually pay ranges. Some companies would address this, private sector companies might address this annually or maybe every two or three years. I don't think we've addressed it in the last eight years. What we've tried to do is make some changes that more accurately reflect pay increases that the board has authorized over the past several years. This document is only a document that we use internally, and we use it kind of as a benchmark. Typically, we're at less than mid-range in these pay ranges, but we want to try to clean this up so that we have an established documented pay range, although this one's called levels, but that's really what this amounts to.
But that's really what this amounts to. Do not be confused and think that this means that employees across the board are getting raises that fall into these categories. That is not the case. This has nothing to do with that whatsoever. Don't construe this to have anything to do with that last conversation. This has only to do, like a lot of agencies do, with trying to establish a mid-range that you try to benchmark against where you think the market is for the workforce. More often than not, we fall in lower than that at the county level, and then probably the city does, and even the school board, but it's because we're offering benefits that the private sector isn't offering. So, our, while our hourly rates are typically lower, the employees recognize that go to work for us, that they're getting, they're becoming participants in the Florida retirement system, we pay their health insurance and other benefits. So, all we're really asking the board to do is just acknowledge that this has come to you publicly, and this is what we will be working from. That's really what this amounts to.
It's also been an adjustment in minimum wage over the past several years that's compressed the ranges.
Every time you have commented over the last several years on compression, we've made the adjustments in the actual salary, but we've never changed this document to reflect those. That's another issue that this is trying to clean up. Now, I'll be honest with you, if we get another one of those mandates next year and the year after, I still don't plan to bring this document back anytime soon. We don't have a need to change this document that frequently.
No.
In the last eight years, I know that it hasn't been to the board.
Any questions, Mr. Harris? Do I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. Any further discussion? Hear none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, I'm 13. Discuss possible board action, any issues associated with the water or the wastewater plant at I-75 and 136. We got anything, Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
This was our only additional item was, we already took care of, didn't we?
I do have a comment on that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Because Keith is here from Finance, I wanted to comment that I would ask the board to go ahead and authorize the release of the checks for the purchase of those vans. Otherwise, they have to be produced, and then they'd be three weeks out waiting to release those checks for the purchase of the vans that you previously authorized the purchase of.
All right. Anybody have any questions on that?
Any motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, a request by Mr. Fleming, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Hear none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item 15, public comments. I have three more.
Yeah, you have additional agenda items.
I don't have them.
Item 14?
There you go. I guess I snatched them out. The clear, old, unservable rock crusher surplus unauthorized for sale. Mr. Harris?
That's probably a crusher none of you have ever seen before, it's actually parked at the landfill.
It's not the one that they keep on repairing?
No, this is a different one. This one, when I discovered this crusher, it had trees growing up in it and around it. So, we did some serious timbering and dug it out. It used to be parked behind some old materials at the mine, and we drug it up to the landfill years ago when we had some very large chunks of asphalt that were taken from a road, and we thought that we would crush those chunks up with this old crusher and use them. When Tropical Storm Debbie came, we didn't have time to crush anything. We just took those chunks out and then put smaller materials and compacted on top of that to fill in very low areas and get people out of, get some of those roads up above flood level. So, we haven't used this in, I'm gonna guess this crusher probably hasn't been used in well over 20 years. It's old, it was retired for good reason, and I didn't think about surplusing this with some other things more recently, so I'm asking that we just go ahead and surplus it now and get rid of it.
We better off surplusing it or just scrapping it?
I like the idea of surplusing it and trying to sell it. We'll just establish a minimum, and if we can't get what we would with scrap, then...
I'm fine with it either way, I was just asking. All right, any questions?
And no parts can be used for our particular crusher?
No.
Good.
No.
I have a motion to approve.
Say move.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. Any further discussion? Hear none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 2, approval of federal-funded sub-grant and grant agreement with the state of Florida, Division of Emergency Management for funds associated with Hurricane Michael. Mr. Harris?
Just a mere technicality, they want that.
Any questions? Hear none? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Discuss possible board action authorization for County Administrator to place advanced order for six motor graders with a two-year lease for ring power utilizing Florida Sheriff's contract bid number FSA 18 VE H16 for Public Works, budgeted item. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a budgeted item. We have learned again, like is always the case, that because of the lead time on actually receiving these graders, that we have to go ahead and place the order now. So, that's the purpose of the request, but these items are budgeted, they were approved in your budget.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Hale, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now, moving on to item 15, public concerns and comment, anyone wishing to speak, they've made their way to the podium, name and address for the record. Hear none? Move on to administrator comments. Mr. Harris, you have anything for us?
Due to the late hour, I'll just ask that we waive the balance of my time in this evening's meeting.
All right. Item 17, board members' quest, comments. Mr. Hale, you have anything?
I will, real quickly. We, the River Task Force had a meeting with the City of Valdosta last Wednesday. It was a very good, productive meeting. They did a little demonstration showing us what they have accomplished and what they look to accomplish going forward. It was interesting to find out how they actually have found funds for this. They need a lot more, but they've got about 70 million set aside. They're doing another 8 million gallon reservoir to catch some more overflow, fixing manholes, just a whole bunch of stuff. I'm actually gonna invite the gentleman to come down and present what we've seen as that board, this board in our community and in the near future. So, but they are really working hard to try to fix these problems. I know we all went into it with, you know, red-faced and wanted to get this fixed, but I will assure you, I feel like they are taking it very seriously and working really hard to fix the problem.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, yeah, and we won the lawnmower race.
We heard.
Yeah.
Mr. Stapleton?
Yeah, just like to say, appreciate you for representing us on Hooked on Heroes. That's a great, great organization there. Also, second what he said on the lawnmower race, other than that is, you know, y'all know who won last year?
It was...
I can't remember.
The team cheated and are now disqualified.
Right. Also, the Catfish Festival, we went down there and enjoyed that on Saturday.
I saw y'all cooking some chicken and rice, it looked like, is that what it was?
Pork and rice.
Pork and rice.
Pork and rice, yep. Other thing here, I got, we got these calendars from B.W. Helvston. So, I want everybody to know, he circles it on my calendar and pushes it up in front of me. Commissioner Hale's birthday is the 18th, he just wanted me to know that. So, happy birthday to you.
All right, appreciate that.
Only other thing I got is, Mr. Chairman, could you get with staff and see if they could get Mr. Harris's address code for our meetings?
We'll work on that.
That's all I got.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Let me tell you where I was.
He don't get a respond, he's already had his chance.
He waived the balance of his time.
Exactly. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Richardson?
Just say that the Catfish Festival in Will, I really appreciate the town of Brandon hosting it, appreciate the, all those volunteered to help out and make sure that it's success. And I really appreciate the veterans. I mean, that, that's really what the Catfish Festival is all about. They really go out of their way to support the veterans. They gave $2,000 for last year to, what's that house over there? I can't, for some reason, just lost the name, over in Gainesville, it's veterans...
The domiciliary?
Huh?
Was it the domiciliary?
No, it's the, it's a house like the Ronald McDonald House, but it's just strictly for veterans and their families to get back, Fisher House, that's it. Thank you very much, Jason. And they, they do a really good job representing our county and the way we feel about veterans, as well as the way we feel about just basically most community issues. So, I really appreciate all that they do, and I look forward to them growing over the next few years, even more.
Mr. Fleming?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have too much, I'd just like to, happy, happy birthday to Commissioner Hale.
How old are you?
Old enough. And I do wish you all a happy Easter.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thanks, sir. All I have, y'all mentioned Hooked on Heroes, you know, that's a local group that has started up, I don't know, four or five years ago. They've really grown. This year, they had 65 volunteers take their boats and their time, and they took 130 vets out fishing, and...
Awesome.
Over the last several years, it seems like every date that we pick has been bad tide, bad weather, hurricane, you name it. We finally had a day that the fish were biting, the weather was good, other than the fact that at 7 o'clock, it was so foggy, you couldn't see the back of the room, and at 3:30 when we went in, it was still that foggy. So, other than that, it was great. So, hats off to those guys, if y'all see any of them, Ron Cadel, or B.J. Blackman, Mr. Gene, any of them, tell them thank you for what they do. They all volunteer their time, work really hard to make that a successful event twice a year.
You pulled in a big ol' fish.
We pulled in several. They caught, we kept four trout, I ain't gonna lie to you and say we kept four keepers, but the Spanish Michael were. Hey, they're clean and fried, but that's good. Other than that, we just need a motion to adjourn unless y'all have anything else.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.